And I'll.
Excellent, we're gonna start. Uh, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, public, please hold your comments until I open the agenda items for public comment. When addressing the board, state your full name both in person and on Zoom. It is suggested that you enter your full name as your ID on Zoom. I will take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll.
Yeah.
The motion to come out.
Martha Motion.
Motion.
John McCollum, second, and we all approve.
Enthusiastic.
All right.
I wasn't enthusiastic. I wanted to say back here.
All right.
All right, we're back in session. We'll take a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty first, twenty twenty five.
I'm over.
Second.
All in favor? Pointments, recognitions, and resignations. Request appointment of Alice Firdle is paid on call firefighting the Mount Desert Fire Department. Effective February four, twenty twenty five, a starting pay of eighteen dollars an hour.
Move appointment.
Second. All in favor? Request appointment of Stephanie Kelly Reese for the Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Move appointment.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Just a quick note, um, I talked to Noel and he feels that the uh comprehensive planning committee is pretty full. So he doesn't want anymore.
But this is okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in that case, you won't put these in here anymore, right?
Right, not for that committee. Like something over there.
And he was happy with, you know, if he was happy with the the representation around the town or?
He did not.
That was kind of a crucial element.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Claire. Uh consent agenda. Letter of appreciation from Island Housing Trust, January twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Move the consent agenda as presented, second.
All in favor? Any select board reports?
I have one. People drive too fast in this town. It's very dangerous. I walk a lot, especially on Millbrook Road. Where there's not a sidewalk and it even the town trucks go whizzing behind me and I go like this. And they go. And it's it's dangerous, especially when the, and even some of the sidewalk areas. They're plowed, but before they're plowed early in the morning, it's just dangerous. And I also had a a remark from um someone who lives on the Georgia Pond Road. Who was talking about the fast traffic there. They've been in touch with the um with the police department and with you. I think you've done, you're doing a study there. About traffic, but the I know we put up those flashing lights and we do all that, but people just drive too fast in my town and I think they should start getting tickets. That's mine.
I do too.
Thank you.
Good. Um.
They drive perfectly slow from Somerville. Oh, wait.
Nice sidewalks though.
Shut up. But no cross.
No.
Okay. Bye.
Okay, somebody having any more select board reports? I do. We need a moderator. I'm gonna think about that pretty soon.
Hold the town meeting. Go, Jerry.
Oh, okay, he's gonna do it again.
Well, he stepped down his chair, so it's less of an issue than it might have been.
Okay.
All right, so let's uh let's take a correction there, Jeff. Bill Firdle, when he was chair, he used to really moderate the town meeting also, so I don't think that was so odd. As one of the chairs of the Orange Committee, Jerry and I used to co-chair because often I was delivering yachts in April and back when the town meeting didn't get back to like May, it was sort of not the greatest thing to not be there after doing all that work. Well, that's why we co-chair.
I didn't realize Bill was chair, but I wouldn't have liked that either. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're all set there, good. Um. And also at some point, we want to put uh the uh our awards.
We don't usually talk about that publicly.
We don't?
No, because it's a big secret.
Yeah, that's why I sent you the notes to be thinking about it. Thank you, John, for letting us know.
Well, I didn't say anything. I let nothing out here.
You want to see it?
No. Okay, um, any unfinished business? Nope. New business, proposal for use of Marina parking lot tennis courts in Northeast Harbor Village Green, Henry Newall.
Hi, hi there. Um, in the, for the summer months, uh, of June twenty first through August twentieth. I'm getting certified as a personal trainer, group certification, corrective exercise. And I'd love to, in the mornings, run some classes, three or four classes, using the tennis courts uh there in Northeast Harbor as lots of communities similar do. Um, and I'd love to utilize one to two parking spaces for a trailer for equipment as well for these classes. Um, I'd love to take questions about it. Um, it's something I'm really passionate about, something the community's really into, and I'm working with the neighborhood house with Britt Noyas on this. Yeah, so any questions?
Are they free?
No, no, they would not be free.
And I personally would like to hear from the Harbor Committee on what their thoughts are on this request.
I'm here to, Jim Wright, I'm here to represent the Harbor Committee. It's not a term before us till we got a letter, an email from John, who was gonna be away. And I can tell you right now, he is not in favor of it. And I don't believe the Harbor Committee is, just for mainly the lack of parking. Uh, even at seven o'clock in the morning, it's starting to fill up. And you know, it's a great idea, but high school would be better. There, open space out there. Um, just we're we're maxed down there. It's all, yeah, and it's just. And that's a significant time.
I wondered about the school field.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Have you thought at all about looking at the high school? It's very centralized, um.
I ha- I have thought about.
Possibly. But they use, the neighborhood has used it a lot, right? Go ahead, sorry.
I don't, sorry, I don't think anybody uses the elementary school. I I I would look into that as well. The high school, um, just as it being out of town, the goal with this would be a lot of like walking there in the morning, biking there. Uh, you know, a lot of people that live in Northeast Harbor and spend their summers in Northeast Harbor is really the goal for it. Just as the neighborhood house has sort of lacking space, you know, any outdoor activities would, you know, really help out in the community and the goal is really, you know, walk, bike, as town is really, you know, walkable and bikeable. Um, but you know, the elementary school would also be a great option. The high school is really just, you know, you gotta drive there. It's a little bit harder to get to, but it 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 does have that room as well. Um, and I understand the concerns about the parking in uh in the harbor, um, which is why I would stress the biking and and the walking and the running to class, um, as it is a fitness class and that is the fit way to get there.
Hi. For the, I'll speak for the elementary school just quickly. If you do want to approach the elementary school, that can be an administrative decision by the principal there. So you just have to go through the paperwork of form for that. It's not unprecedented. There are other um paid fitness classes that do operate there. Some are in the gym. Some are in the basketball court. You have to contend with, there are summer camps that also utilize that space, so you'll just have to plan accordingly and accommodate other users in that space. And there's a priority list for who can use those spaces and you're just gonna fit in that list where you fit. And priority will be given based on demand, but you can just reach out to the school for that.
Yeah.
Alan. Uh, Alan Kimberly, Harbor Committee. Uh, you want to use the tennis courts themselves to do this?
Yes, in in the the morning hours, uh, that would be, yes.
I don't know if people are coming there to play tennis. I would think, you know, tennis would have priority over anything like that.
Certainly would.
I just feel like um looking into the elementary school would be a much better option for you. I feel like the parking, the busyness, um, and then you know, letting something like this happen could kind of open doors for other organizations. And I feel like, like you said, um, Jim, that that Marina is maxed out and you know, you think about the morning of the farmer's market that's already kind of there, like adding something else a day like I just, I can't even fathom um what that would mean. So I would recommend that you look into the month, the elementary school. I would, I would not be in favor of this.
I would not either.
Yeah, I agree. This elementary school would be a much better option for you.
I do think it's a great idea, though. I think what you're trying to do is amazing and I love the community aspect and the biking and the walking and I think that's all really good, but I just feel like that location is 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 already overused.
Yeah, totally understand, totally understand. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we need to vote, yes.
Want to make a?
Do we make a motion in the affirmative?
Yes.
My favorite thing, I I vote, uh, I don't know, how do I even word this? I propose that we allow Gary Newhall or Henry Newhall to uh operate his business in the Village Green and the tennis courts.
Right.
Okay, you seconded. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, request carried forward.
I think Jim had one more.
Yes.
While we're talking, can we go off subject? While we're talking about the tennis court area. We came up in the Harbor Committee meeting the other day that we've seen, the committee has seen nothing about this ice rink. It's gonna have require these big generators or whatever. Who chill the ice.
Yeah.
Last report, I mean, John said that he saw something where it was uh, it it was gonna need a unit that was, we'd run the whole length of one of the longest, you know, length of the tennis courts. That would be a permanent unit. And originally we were told we were gonna see something and there's concern about noise, which maybe. But um I guess our concern is that it not end up looking like what's happened in on Main Street. Where we now look like we're in the middle of, well, it's gonna be a quaint neighborhood, rebuilders now, it's like it's underneath a major transmission line. So I think before they start tearing it up, we need some real looks.
So we're still early enough in this process that it didn't probably make sense to come to the Harbor Committee just yet, but we're getting to a point now where we're very close to wanting to go to the Harbor Committee. To give you an update on where things are and what things are looking like, because of the size and the number of uh compressors and where that would go is still we're just getting to the point where we're determining what that is. There's some decision points that we're at.
Yeah.
That we need to consider. We're having a meeting tomorrow, actually, for some of that. And I can work with John and be sure that we come back to you shortly thereafter.
Yeah.
Um, I I understand that you'd want to hear something about it, but it's not that a lot has been going on and you haven't been kept in the loop. Something has been going on. It's probably about time to come back to you. We haven't been forgetting about you.
It was a definite error up in the fall, I think, the new COVID tennis courts.
Yes, that is the schedule, what, uh, how the, all the other stuff fits together and what that looks like is still sort of in the works. So we will, I'll I'll get us on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's important.
I just want to reiterate, I agree. I think the weight factor and the size of that, you know, I mean I understand it would improve the skating, but I also think with the environment, today it was thirty eight and then it was raining. You know, I mean, there's just it might be working against just trying to keep great ice down there. And um so I, and I've been driving down. I haven't seen a lot of people, you know, when we did the parking thing, we had a parking committee and we went down and checked and I just started checking. You know, I've seen people skating, but not a lot. Um so I mean, if those compressors are running twenty-four seven, that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah. Alan.
Uh, we're also wondering if it's possible that there could be a better location than the tennis court. You know, if it be a real skating rink, it's probably gonna have to have a roof. You know, to keep the sun off and all the other stuff to keep the ice in good condition. Most of the time that I see it, the ice is just atrocious. Uh, almost too hard to skate on. So I don't know if that group is interested in trying to find a better location for it. I know years ago, there was thought about high school hockey teams. I don't know if they could get involved in any of that. But it just seems like the tennis courts are a strange location for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I see. I I know what you mean. Uh. I think the high school has nothing to play. But I agree. I think that would be a perfectly appropriate place for a ice rink. Okay. We are set with that. Okay. Request carry forward of unexpended conditional donation of twenty thousand dollars from the Northeast Harbor Ambulance Service for purchase of a Lund University cardio pulmonary assist system to account one four four zero three three zero dash five three one one zero dash zero four zero four.
We approve the carry forward.
Second.
All in favor? Notice of Bar Harbor's withdrawal from the shared deputy chief agreement and review of the Ross Fire Department proposed budget.
Your memo was pretty clear.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
The changes, I guess I'll put the changes to make a little bit clearer, so um unfortunately, this uh I learned this about a week after I presented them publicly to you. Uh, so I went back and drawing board. Um, obviously, the loss of deputy chief and running our EMS division is quite a setback, so we're gonna have to fill that position. So what I come up with, uh, earlier, I uh wanted to uh have the assistant chief position restated by Department, but we're gonna have that out of one of the existing group. Now I'd like to have that as a mandatory position in the fire department, replace the loss of the deputy chief. Um, what I've done to try to take a little bit of the sting out of adding a whole position fully funded this year is I moved some numbers around on the on the budget, so um, we were able to use the sixty two thousand dollars that was slated to pay for the deputy chief that contributed towards the assistant chief salary. Um, I did reinstate um the four captains to bring them back again because the assistant chief that we now needs to be nine hours. Um, and to be um to be able to to fill in for a duty officer if if possible, or more near my office. Um, and then we brought in one lieutenant. Um, and as you can see in the flow chart or the hierarchy chart I passed around there. To save some additional funding, um, what I did is I chose to fund one of those positions just a half a year. Um, so we're not gonna promote anybody until about six months in or hire the assistant chief about six months in. Bottom line, I was able to add that position for about, uh, increase about thirteen thousand dollars for the budget. Um, you guys have not seen this yet, but I did uh present it to the Orange Committee last week. They seem to be receptive. I, I, we understand that, you know, you need that kind of leadership and it's an important thing, but you have, the personality you have, and you can't have just one person running this story.
Okay, I have one question, just to, um, I know you, I appreciate the work to to shuffle things around and try to make that happen. The per diem the part of that only thirteen thousand dollars came from a reduction in your per diem estimate?
Correct.
Um, and that's a hard thing, because like that blows, doesn't it, year after year? That's a hard thing to project.
Yeah, well, the per diem are individuals that um are not full-time, but they come in and they're living full-time. It, well, the per diem, um, are individuals that, um, are not full-time, but they come in and they're in a full-time position at, at per day, per diem.
Yeah.
Um, I was, I dropped that ten thousand dollars based on what we spent last year.
Okay.
Uh, we spent, I think it was around thirty, thirty-five thousand out of that line, so I felt comfortable by bringing that down.
That's fair. So it wasn't, okay. I know it's impossible to know exactly. It's like overtime.
Exactly, yeah.
But uh yeah, but if, but it's not an unreasonable number. The sixty was more than enough, probably.
Based on.
Fifty was still, should still be enough. Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Right. Anything else on that?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, cause that, Mike, I was talking before, um I hear you say that the assistant chief could fill in when you're shorthanded? Was that for a duty officer? Yeah, every ship has to have an officer that can charge the duty. But duty officers have flying off, vacation, something like that. So when they're, when they're gone, we would have somebody, the assistant chief could slide in and pick up that ship.
You mentioned that we were talking about closing Somerville and you didn't have, you don't really eliminate that whole thing, so.
Uh, some light, mainly those stations being closed in Somerville because of that one paramedic position is still open. Sometimes it is multiple people have, you know, days off or if we have somebody on sick, somebody's on vacation and that sort of thing, but the bulk of that station is being closed primarily because of that one short paramedic staffing. Does it, would assistant chief have to have, wouldn't have to be paramedic, but he'd have to be an E and B or anything? They wouldn't have to be, but whoever we uh decides is gonna run the EMS division or department does have to have a permanent license. Yeah, so it would have to be a, a paramedic, yeah.
Great.
Here he is. Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything else? Discussion of the state's new liquor licensing program and approval process.
Again, very clear.
Yeah, very clear. I think we, we vote and you deal with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we vote for you or is it to be able to, once we approve, then you can do it or should it be Derlin?
Well, that's kind of where I was leaning. I have no problem doing it.
Okay. I just feel like it makes sense.
Yeah.
Cause you're the one that receives them, you're the one that brings them to us. If we would have approved them, that I feel like it would make sense for.
Okay, and I think it's, you know, easiest just to do the vote and have it recorded in the minutes rather than, you know, making up a signature page that apparently the state doesn't feel that they need.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that too.
So I, uh, I need a motion.
So I move that we, we follow Claire's recommendation for how to go forward with the new permits, liquor licensing permits and so on.
And allow Claire to file those on our behalf.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a second? Martha?
When you seconded.
When, okay, all in favor? Awesome.
Done.
A review and approve the purchase of the solar energy installation on the town garage from revision investments in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars from account three zero 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 six five dash five seven seven one zero.
So I provided the payback period, it's about nine years, just slightly over nine years.
Again, very clear.
Yeah, I would move approval without much.
That was authorized then.
Yeah, move approval.
Second.
Good, all in favor? Yeah, I think that was the plan when they first went up.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Uh, let's see, uh review and approve authorizing the drafting and submittal of testimony in opposition to LD thirty-two and LD two fifty-seven acts to repeal and eliminate net energy billing.
Bills such as this do come up. It's not uncommon, but this is sort of a little bit different situation where we are proposing to purchase this. We are proposing to put two more. It is actually, you know, good for the citizens up at town as well. I personally, solar panels, net energy benefits me. And this would be pretty devastating to those that are relying on net energy billing in terms of that payback period for for a raise.
I would move approval as presented. Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I was like, I'm willing to sign, uh, uh, as the chair of the sustainability committee also.
Sure.
We all, we discussed it lightly at our committee meeting last Wednesday and, and we, it'd be a really good thing, you know, we, we, the town has a lot of walls in the air, you know, as far as having two new sites, just purchasing there can be very difficult. You know, Brian and I were discussing earlier, we have big battery storms and not being able to take advantage. I think it's a classic, you know, across the aisle poison pill that comes up that's often, you know, placed by the power companies.
Yeah, who I'm annoyed with right now.
Exactly. So I think it would really remove the town and every citizen that has solar on their property would be very pro having, being able to keep that metering.
Yeah. All in favor?
Hey, well, just, just to be clear, we're gonna have Derlin submitted on behalf of the select board and
Right.
the sustainability committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll work with Derlin to get that draft line of lines stuff.
Good.
Perfect.
Big guns.
Yeah.
Um, can I, Tracy Aberman, can I just say one thing? Um, that's, that's due, that letter, I just wrote my letter too, cause I actually have solar panels too. And this would be pretty devastating to me, but um, that's due on Thursday, that as long as you guys know that. The testimony is due on Thursday, February sixth, before one o'clock. Just so you know.
Yeah, thanks Tracy.
Yep.
Yeah. Proposed fiscal year twenty-six marina budget and revenues.
Guns in Florida.
They have marinas there.
They do.
Well, I think there are boats.
We have three veterans that aren't gonna be here.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty much.
They fled.
It's pretty straightforward, it's not really.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's anything very. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, that looks.
Yeah, I didn't.
You make more than what it produces.
Good. Yeah, that'll look fine. And there's
Yeah.
Nothing still out to me.
Nope.
Hmm.
Anything, Mike?
I'll just take the frail edition.
Now, when you say recognized, you mean realized? What is the difference?
You mean for revenues?
Yeah.
The recognized revenues is what we actually got.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I always thought the term would be realized.
Well, maybe, but right, I was gonna say, I think that's, in our usage.
They're realized and then they're recognized.
Yeah, we use both terms in governmental accounting.
Okay, let's see.
They're just about flat from a year ago.
Yeah, doesn't look very changed.
It wasn't.
We didn't do all the capital gains, but we did up, up the designated fund balance increase, so might make up for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Public comment. Huh?
What?
Oh, age, municipal revenues, buddy?
We just did it.
Thought we were still on marina.
No.
No. All very.
Yeah.
Great.
So any public comment? No, uh, any other business?
We have warrants, don't we? No, sorry.
Don't rush it.
No, but I'm sorry, the, the.
Oh, yes, those ones.
No, I'm getting there.
I didn't, I'm sorry, John.
I like to savor this.
I just.
Yeah. Treasurer's warrants. Approval and signature town invoice, AP two five fifty-one in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty, nine, ninety-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Move approval and signature.
Second.
All in favor? Approval and signature state fees and payroll benefits, AP twenty-five forty-nine, AP twenty-five fifty, and town payroll, PR twenty-five sixteen in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move approval and signature for authorizations.
All in favor?
One extension, please.
And acknowledgement, school invoice, school payroll, PR sixteen and voided dispersments, V twenty-five oh seven for a net of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Move acknowledgement.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, I can take a motion, adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, everybody.